SJC 12516, Maria Bilalta v. Brookline Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Allen, good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chief Justice, members of the court, good morning. My name is Jeffrey Allen, and I'm before you this morning representing the appellant in this appeal. I would like to start off by expressing my appreciation to the court for taking this case on direct appellate review, because the more you prepare for this oral argument, and the more you read the statute of the cases, the more you comprehend the need for Supreme Judicial Court guidance and direction in this very confusing area of the law that sort of has spun out of control. We are now in a place, we're now in a place that this case comes to you where under our current appeals court precedent, people living in non-conforming homes, whether that non-conforming be by height, density, as in this case setback, are in a special class of zoning. They stand exempt from zoning. They stand exempt from the appeals set forth in zoning statutes.
Well, that's an overstatement, isn't it? I mean, if it's a new non-conforming aspect, they're clearly completely subject to zoning, right?
Yes, I agree.
So we're really, and they're also, if it's an intensification of a previously non-conforming aspect, they still have to go through the second sentence, right? They still have to go through the substantial detriment analysis, correct?
That's correct, but that's exempt from zoning and appeal. I agree with you.
So the issue is, right, an intensification of an existing non-conforming use goes through only, I'm not use, intensification of a non-conformance requires you only go through the second sentence under the appeals court analysis as opposed to zoning.
That is correct.
So that's the issue.
That is, you stated it specifically, Your Honor, and you're correct. And that is the case even when the local zoning bylaw requires more.
Right.
And that flies directly in the face of the precedent set by this court and the absolute words set by this court in the Rockwood case.
Can I ask about Rockwood for a second? In Rockwood, the zoning, Rockwood's a commercial, not a residential structure, right?
It is, but I don't think that that's really relevant to the holding in Rockwood.
And I understand you, they have that next sentence in place. In Rockwood, the actual zoning that there was basically the substantial detriment analysis, right? They had that provision in Rockwood that didn't require a variance, it just required basically a second sentence type of analysis, right? So even if you went through zoning, you only went through a second sentence analysis, correct?
Right, and that's what the appeals court, I think it was in Gale or Diedrich, and I can check, it was in Gale. That's why the appeals court in Gale sort of said, "Well, we know the SJC said that, but that was just dictum."
But it is dictum, isn't it?
Well, it was, but dictum's important.
And it's dictum, but it's sort of also dictum where the actual zoning compliance was a second sentence zoning compliance. So it may have been sort of sloppy language, too, right? Possibly?
If you're asking me to agree that the SJC used sloppy language, I'm going to defer.
Never in history has it ever used sloppy language, I'm sure, right?
Right. But what I'm saying is, here, we have an absolute zoning bylaw that says, if you're going to extend a non-conforming use, not a use, I see, a non-conforming aspect, you must comply with some provision in the bylaw. And I think this case is perfect, because here, the appellant and the appellee are direct neighbors. Here, the appellee is taking a non-conforming house to a density of, I think it's 1.36. Here, my clients, the appellees, couldn't do that without getting a variance. So you have two houses right next to each other, being treated totally different because one house was a little too high on its density, so became a non-conforming on its density, and can do whatever it's want. And even worse than that, my client has no right to challenge when she, before the Board of Appeals, and I was not counsel at that time.
But is there a reason, and by the way, you point out, both briefs are really good, so I'm not criticizing what you're arguing, I'm just saying that, is there a reason for that? Because that house was already non-conforming, while your house is not, in your hypothetical, your actual person is not non-conforming in that respect. So the fact that it's getting worse in a non-conform, we don't want more non-conformances, but we're willing to allow intensification of an existing non-conformance if it doesn't have a substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Right.
I know it may not make perfect sense, but...
There's no logical reason for that, respectfully. Because if they already have 1.10 FAR, and the FAR is 1.0, why would we make it easier for the non-conforming to get bigger? The whole idea of the treatment under 48 of non-conformance is to protect them so they're treated fairly, not to create a glide path to exemption from zoning. And here's a perfect example. My clients attempted, before the Board of Appeals, and I wasn't there, to show that this addition would change the shadows on their house. And the Board of Appeals said, "Well, that's really irrelevant, because it's not any damage to the abutte. You must show that detriment to the neighborhood, not the abutte. And it must be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood."
But isn't that a separate issue which the Brookline ZBA asks us to shed light on as to what that neighborhood means and whether or not the neighborhood includes the impact on abutters?
Right, yes. But I think it underscores, underscores, I was going to say, maybe that's too strong a word, this, the non-conforming is like a snowball. And as every case comes before the courts, that snowball keeps gathering more snow to the point now that if you went out to buy a house in Brookline, or in any community, I'm sorry, any community, and you had two identical houses, one was non-conforming in setback and in floor area ratio and height, and the other was all conforming, you should have paid more money for the non-conforming, it's more valuable.
So you've made a really compelling argument for why it's not fair, but isn't that what the statute says?
No.
That if you're grandfathered in, you get special treatment?
I, no, you know, I must say that the more you read the statute, the more you get confused. I mean, it's almost like an optical illusion, it changes every time you read it. I can honestly say that since the SJC didn't write this decision, this is sloppy draftsmanship. But the statute does say, "It applies to any reconstruction, extension, or structural change of such structure, and to any alteration of a structure, or any extension or structural change to a single or two-family residential structure that it doesn't apply, that does not increase the nature, the non-conforming nature of the structure." The statute specifically says the only thing it does is doesn't comply if you're not increasing the non-conforming. And it says it does apply if you are increasing the non-conforming. The only argument I see under the statute is it never says that the substantial detriment is the sole barrier, or isn't the sole barrier, the subject, the statute is totally silent on that. And this court in Rockwood was very clear, and went on and said, even in single-family homes, it said...
Yeah, read that sentence, because when you realize that the zoning bylaw there actually is a substantial detriment bylaw, it makes it a little, the dictum even less clear, doesn't it?
No, it says, if we, you want me to read from Rockwood, right. "If we were not to construe, General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, in that way, that the zoning, you have to apply it with zoning, the provision in the first quoted sentence that a zoning ordinance of bylaw shall apply to any reconstruction, extension, or structural change of a protected non-conforming structure would be meaningless surplifage, indeed, even as to single or two-family residents, structures to which the statute applies gives special protection. The zoning board or bylaw applies to a reconstruction, extension, or change that would intensify the existing non-conformities or result in additional ones."
But what makes Rockwood sort of particularly problematic is, in Rockwood, the zoning bylaw just tracked the substantial detriment thing, didn't it?
That's correct.
So it kind of, like, it was a meaningless...
But we're, I don't think it is, because it lays open to the municipalities, like in this case, that you could provide more. And I want to touch on one other point.
You'll get there, but I've got a question for you. You speak about it being unfair between those who have non-conforming uses and those who have conforming uses. And let's assume you are, let's assume you prevail here today. Won't there still be a difference between your client and a owner of a non-conforming use in that if your client seeks to move to 1.27, he needs a zoning variance?
That's correct.
But that's all he needs.
Right.
In your world, if you persuade us to move to your world, if the non-conforming owner of a unit moves to 1.27, he needs to get a zoning variance, and he also needs to make this additional showing...
You're right, Your Honor.
So they're still going to be different.
Right, but the first one, I think, has always been the door that opened, the opening of the door, and that it's not going to be substantially more detrimental than the current use to the neighborhood. That is the lowest, that standing is lower than a special permit. You can't get any lower of a showing than that. That is, in the world of zoning...
I'm sorry.
In the world of zoning, that is, as we would, is a no-brainer. I mean, if you, if you can't make that showing, you couldn't make the showing for a variance or a special permit.
But that's, that's my question, is why would the legislature, I mean, I would think that you're not going to get a variance if the zoning board determines that it would be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So why would the legislature be so foolish as to say you need to get a variance, and you also need to make a showing which you would never have gotten a variance if you couldn't make?
Because you may be able to make that showing and get a special permit. They're different findings. In fact, the special permit takes into account the neighbors, a host of other factors. And so variance is a different breed, because it's so difficult to guess, get in any situation. But a special permit is so discretionary, so discretionary, and we need to remember, and this goes totally where we are, totally against it, the whole purpose under 48, when you get into the legislative history, is to treat non-conformings fairly, but not to encourage more non-conformities, but actually get more conformity. This does the exact opposite. And anybody that's a practitioner in the zoning world today will tell you that the client that comes in with the non-conforming has got a giant leg up. I just want to get to one point...
But before you do, on that last point, though, it doesn't increase the amount of non-conforming use, it increases perhaps the nature of the non-conforming use.
Yeah, but the non...
Not the amount of non-conforming uses out there in the neighborhood.
Well, it does, because as the zoning laws change, you get more non-conforming, and then they get bigger. Just in this case, the bigger the house, the more valuable the house. So the conforming houses have to be at 1.0, they were at 1.10, they want to go to 1.36. Everybody values houses on their square footage, so the more, if you're non-conforming, you got a more valuable house.
But that's not the standard, is it? I mean, whether one house is more valuable than another, that's really not at the heart of the standard.
You're correct. No, it's not at the standard, but it shows how unfair it is, and it shows, it shows that it's not working. I just want to get to one last point.
I promised you you would, so go ahead.
It's in the record, and it shows how confusing it is. Everybody agrees that there is no relief in the Brookline zoning bylaw that it would allow the appellee to get to this floor area ratio. But yet, the Brookline Board of Appeals gave him a special permit to do it. But as we all know, a special permit is a creature of the zoning bylaw, and there is no special permit available for this increase. And I just want to make that clear on the record, I think...
But isn't, doesn't the second sentence, when it refers to the special permit granting authority, isn't that where that authority comes from?
I don't think so. I think what really comes from that second, from the statute in general, is what is commonly referred to, and I think appropriately referred to, as a Section 6 finding. A special permit has to be created by the municipal zoning bylaw, and there is no way under the Brookline zoning bylaw that this house could get to 1.36 FAR floor area ratio.
So if you prevail, they couldn't, they couldn't even apply for a variance?
They could apply for a variance, because that, you apply for a variance with the building, when the zoning bylaw, anybody can apply for a variance when the bylaw doesn't provide for the relief. They certainly could apply for, they certainly could apply for a variance, but everybody agrees they didn't.
Right, but in your world, they could still apply for a variance.
Absolutely.
But they would not be, they would not be able to go straight to a special permit.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilbert.
Good morning, Chief Justice. Associate justices, may it please the court. My name is Jennifer Depazo-Gilbert, and I represent the appellees Jason Jewhurst and Nureet Zucker, the homeowners in this case. In 2016, the homeowners were denied a building permit, and they applied for zoning relief to the zoning board of appeals. The project consisted of adding a dormer to the front facade to increase the headroom and add 677 square feet of living space for their growing family. The relief was specifically allowed under Section 6 of 48. Plaintiff's completely ignore the language in Section 6. I look at it as providing three levels of protection. In the first sentence, you have two clauses. That first except clause is what we call grandfathering. It applies to all non-conforming, pre-existing uses and structures. When you move to the second except clause, that gives a further layer of protection intended by the legislature and clear from the legislative history to further protect single families and two families.
If it does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure, right?
Correct.
And doesn't this, don't we all agree it does increase the non-conforming nature?
It does, because the pre-existing non-conforming nature in this particular case was the floor area ratio.
So we don't meet that unless we get, we keep going, right?
Correct, so then you have to proceed to the second sentence. And the second sentence, in this particular case, where the non-conformity is going to be intensified, the nature of the non-conformity being the floor area ratio would expand to 670, expand 670 square feet for a total livable area of 1,990 square feet. So we get to go to the zoning board for a determination of whether a special permit, small s, small p, right, not a 48, Section 9 special permit, but a special permit under Section 6, if there's a finding of no substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Well, that's the issue, I mean, that's the issue, right?
Right.
I mean, the language isn't clear. The appeals court decisions are clear. The language of the statute isn't so clear, and even the language of the SJC opinions aren't perfectly clear on this point either, right?
Well, they're not clear, but they certainly provide, I would argue, sufficient guidelines and direction to the zoning board of appeals. I would, I would point out that Rockwood was decided in 1991. It's not relevant to this particular case for several reasons. It far predated Bajorcland and Bransford, the two SJC decisions on point, number one. It dealt with a commercial structure, number two. And number three, a variance was required because they were increasing not only the setback, but also the size and footprint of the building. And what's interesting to note, in this particular case, you had a non-conforming lot. The lot was small, this is in a T5 district, and the lot size for this two-family and attached single was 5,000, is 5,000 square feet. This particular lot is 2,773 square feet. So it was non-conforming as to lot size, but the only non-conformity that was going to be intensified was the floor area ratio, unlike Bransford and Bajorcland, where the proposed new structures met all of the other dimensional requirements, except for the fact that it didn't meet the minimum lot size.
Can I ask, the point that I find the most troublesome made by your brother is that you're in a better situation as a non, because you're a non-conforming, you're non-conforming on the far, you're able to increase that non-conformance by getting a section, a second sentence finding, while a person who is conforming can't. And why are you allowed to make something worse on, under, just with a substantial detriment analysis, and a person who is not at all non-compliant needs to go the full, you know, route through the zoning bylaw? That's the thing I just don't understand. I understand the law, and I understand what we've said, but I just don't understand the logic a little bit.
So Justice Court's dissent in both Bransford and Bajorcland goes into the legislative history of Section 6, and the balancing and competing interests of wanting to bring non-conforming properties into conformity, but also balancing the interest and protecting the interest of single-family homeowners and two-family homeowners. But it's not limitless, okay? And what my brother seems to imply and has written in the brief is that it's limitless, and it's a blank check. It's not, there are levels of protection.
I think he's saying it's favoritism, that, I don't think he's arguing that it's limitless. He understands you need to go through the second sentence. He's just saying, why would the legislature want you to have a non-conforming person be able to make that non, that particular non-conformance worse, easier than someone else who's completely in compliance? It may be because you're already over the line, and therefore, we're not going to worry about this as much. But I just don't understand the logic. It would help me if you sort of directly address his argument.
His, the argument is directly addressed when looking at the legislative history, because the legislature had options. They could have, for example, and it's noted in the Department of Community Affairs report when this section was being discussed, that to rid the communities of these non-conformities, they could have, for example, put in the statute that they could take it by eminent domain. They chose not to, and in fact, the language that was adopted specifically provides these protections and this favoritism, as you've called it, to single-family and two-family homes. To ignore that language, which I believe my brother would like the court to do, nullifies the meaning and intent of Section 6. I also want to point out that in Bajorcland, the court concluded and held that specifically, that small-scale projects, alterations, and extensions are as a matter of law, they do not increase the intensity of a non-conforming use.
But you're not arguing that this is not an intensification, I mean, might have, but you, you're not arguing here that this conversion to the different kind of dormer is not an intensification, right? You could have, but you, I don't think we have fact finding on that, do we?
No, that's correct, Your Honor. I'm just pointing out that small-scale, I'm pointing out that the zoning board could have, when the case was before it, looked to Bajorcland and said, "Actually, the SJC, this court, specifically said that adding a dormer and enclosing a sunroom or a porch, which implies that you're creating more livable space, is as a matter of law, a small-scale project." The zoning board could have done that.
But if we want to go that route, we have to remand this right for findings about whether that constitutes an intensification or not, right? Because we don't have any finding by the land court judge on that.
Correct, and I don't think that's necessary to remand it, because they went on further to make a finding of no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And that was conceded, and as a matter of record in the land court, that the plaintiffs stipulated that if no variance is required for this particular case, then the granting of a special permit, and again, I note, small s, small p, right, because there is a difference.
He's saying they didn't, he said that they, if they were using the second sentence, they should have just said, "This is a second, second sentence finding, not a special permit." He's saying that they kind of goofed up when they did this through a special permit, because that suggests they were applying zoning laws to it.
Well, I think, one, that's semantics, and number two, plaintiffs have already conceded that if a special permit was issued, it was valid, and that the ZBA had the authority to do so. Finally, I just want to say that to find for the plaintiffs, you would have to find that Diedrich and Gale, the both appeals court decisions, were wrong. And we know that Diedrich remanded the case for a finding of whether or not the increase in the height of that particular structure required a variance or not. And we know that in Gale, there was a reference to Rockwood not being applicable to single families and two families. And we also know that in Gale, the local bylaw would have also required a variance because it increased the footprint of that particular building, and the court chose to make a finding and a holding that, in keeping with the special treatment explicitly provided for in the statute for singles and twos, only a special permit and a finding under Section 6 is required. And so we ask that this court affirm the land court's decision granting summary judgment to the appellees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson, on behalf of the ZBA.
Chief Justice, Associate Justices, may it please the court. My name is Jonathan Simpson, and I represent defendant Appellee Town of Brookline Zoning Board of Appeals. The Section 48, Chapter 48, Section 6, we believe is intended, as Justice Budd has already referenced, to give special protection to pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses, in particular, single-family and two-family residences. We believe the board advanced that purpose by following clearly established case law with respect to this matter. We believe that the cases can and should be harmonized, all the way from the Fitzsimmons and Willard appeals cases that laid out the analysis, to the Bransford and Biorcland cases that adopted that analysis, to the Gale and Diedrich analysis that made, cases that made that analysis explicit. We even believe that the Rockwood case can and should be harmonized with that line of cases through recognizing, most importantly, that that case involved the creation of a new non-conformity, not the intensification of an old one.
Can I ask you, with regard to the finding that it, that it did not have substantial detriment to the neighborhood, did the ZBA in Brookline consider the effect on the actual neighbors?
The ZBA took testimony from the neighbors and considered their impact. I believe a characterization as to whether they can, they made that dispositive, I think is far beyond what we can do here, but they did take that into effect. I don't think there's any procedure in the board to say, "We can only look at the neighborhood as a whole, and you neighbors' interests cannot be considered at all." I believe they tried to consider the interests of the neighborhood as a whole and balance them against some direct shadow impacts the neighbors were alleging and elected to find that... find that the, it did not rise to the level of a substantial impact to the neighborhood. But as you have already noted, Chief Justice Gantz, we, the board, the biggest directive I got from my client, the Board of Appeals, with respect to this was, please request some more guidance with respect to this standard. And I would caution you that the appellant has requested that allowing the, that we can preserve the abilities of pre-existing nonconforming structures to do things when you allow for the, that, that certain changes will not be considered, constitute increases in the nonconformity. I would ask that, that if you choose to go back to a paradigm where that is the central analysis, that you provide some guidance, additional guidance on that as well.
What, how would you articulate that additional guidance that you're looking for? What, what would you look for specifically?
Thank you for the question. I, I believe that the specific guidance they're referencing is, for example, could you reference back to your own zoning bylaw when you are looking at whether something is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? How stringent a standard could that be? Is there a delineator to what a neighborhood is? How far out would you need to go? Is, you know, you don't, we don't have to crunch numbers here, but, you know, many of the zoning, many zoning parameters are numerically based. If there was a, you know, a percentage amount, a doubling, a increase by 50%, something along those lines, maybe even a critical mass of abutters who are believed to be impacted. I'm just speculating here.
So sort of, we can't rely on common sense as this is trying to be figured out. So if there's an enormous impact on the abutters, and, but most of the neighborhood isn't going to be adversely impacted, then the zoning board of appeals should be able to factor in, in the impact on the neighborhood, the particular impact on the neighbors by way of comparison.
I think that, that guidance to that effect, that, that it would be valuable because I, I think even as, as the appellant's attorney has noted, there is a tension between, okay, you right next to us are getting impacted, but the rest of the people aren't. How, you know, how much of an impact is too much? It is really a standard they have struggled with in the past.
I'm confused, though. You, you want us to affirm this, right?
Yes, yeah, I do.
I mean, sometimes you get what you wish for. And so if you want us to clarify all this, how are we going to do this when we have no factual findings and very little analysis from the zoning board on that? Aren't you asking for us to create a bunch of new standards for you and then send it back to you to redo?
I, I am certainly not asking for a remand. The board of appeals has enough on its plate right now.
Well, so how do we do what you're asking for without remanding it? I'm confused.
I believe that, that it's a, it's certainly a going-forward analysis, but I believe that the board of appeals decision in this case would be defensible under, under almost any standard I can conceive of you granting. I do not think this case warrants remand.
So even though we, it's an abstraction in this case, you want us to come up with new standards for you on this difficult issue without any findings of fact?
I, if, if possible, I certainly don't, don't think that, that it is something that, that if you do not feel comfortable doing, we require, but it is something that the board specifically requested.
I'm sure your sister's going to love that approach, but that's okay.
Let me ask you, how, how much deference should we give to a local board of appeals or a local zoning, zoning board with regard to assessment of this impact in their particular neighborhood?
I, I think that you should give a great deal of discretion. I think one thing that 48 section 6 tries to recognize is that every case is different and every circumstance is different, to the extent you can give guidance as to the broad strokes, i.e. what is a, what is a neighborhood, whether a butter is like, whether a butter is can be considered exclusive of a neighborhood or is part of a neighborhood, those sort of things. It would all be helpful, but no, certainly, the, the board of appeals is the board with the discretion here and is appropriately so.
So the, so the appellant says that the Gale case from the appeals court and the Appellies interpretation of, of section 6 makes no sense because why would we have a statute that increases nonconforming use? But that determination about nonconforming uses has already been made by the legislature as a matter of public policy that they can exist. So I guess the argument would be, tell me if this is the argument, that, okay, we have a nonconforming use, it's legislatively approved, and since it already exists, it can be increased as long as it's not going to hurt the neighborhood and you go get a special permit.
Yes, absolutely. I think we, zoning bylaws are often and mostly intended at, you know, what you can build now, what you can do in the future. I think pre-existing structures and uses by their very nature predate that. They have to be given a special treatment because of that, yes.
And going back to Justice Kafker's question, do we have in the record the interpretation or the grounds used by the board to determine that it was not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood?
I do not believe it is, if we do, it's not very expansive.
Okay, so how are we going to know whether or not the guidance that we, that you say we should give conforms to the board's understanding of what it was doing?
The, you do have the gross parameters of what they're doing in terms of how much of a, of an increase with respect to the allowed square, floor area ratio, where it was located, similar things that you, that the, this court used in the Bjorkland decision to define what, what would and would not be a constituted increase in the nonconformity.
Do we know how it weighed the adjoining landowner's interest in view of the overall neighborhood?
I do not think so, no.
Okay, thank you, and we'll take our morning break.